Meeting number thirty-nine is now called to order on this August 5th, 2019. It is 5:30 PM and we're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Kathleen, tell us your rule call, please.
Graham Murray, here. McCambo.
Here.
Rinker. Wilson. Here. Phillips.
Here. I almost answered for you.
Your last name's Phillips.
I know, I know.
Okay. First, we have a thank you from Greater Burlington Partnership for RagBri.
Hello, I'm Kay Sackville Brewer with the Greater Burlington Partnership and on behalf of the Burlington RagBri Planning Committee, we wanted to thank the City of Burlington for the fantastic partnership that occurred on July 26th as we welcomed thousands of bicycle riders into our community. We had numerous departments from the City of Burlington who stepped up and helped showcase Burlington and ensured that we were ready to host that twenty thousand or so people. In particular, the crews who helped clean up the riverfront after our flooding this year made it a priority. It was greatly appreciated as that was one of the focal areas for the big event. It's a focal point of our community. The riverfront was able to showcase all the great things that we have here, the mighty Mississippi River. They played games down there, they listened to live music, took lots of photos, and even enjoyed some of the shade trees that are down there. So that was great to see and see the riverfront being used for what it was intended. Additionally, there were numerous departments who assisted through either volunteering, offering insight on logistics, or meeting with RagBri contractors and officials throughout the planning process. Those include public works, roads, buses, parks, water treatment, wastewater treatment, electrical, police, fire, EMT services, city hall staff, and of course, city council members. The city parks, along with Snake Alley, were also showcased for the riders and their support. Snake Alley kept busy all day on Friday through the Snake Alley Challenge and even again on Saturday morning. We had one rider who told us he went up it twenty-nine times.
Oh my god.
And he was very excited even until the end. So that was great to see.
Rachel Lindine, also with the Greater Burlington Partnership, just thought I would take this time and offer a little feedback that we heard from some of our participants. From Shelley of the Quad Cities, I just wanted to tell you what a nice job Burlington did with RagBri. It was a long day rolling in through Geode State Park, west Burlington, and then on to Burlington, but the hospitality was great. We stayed at the beautiful park and I heard great things from friends who venture downtown. I know that is so much work to pull together, so I just wanted to share it was well received. Lori of Geneseo sent us a note. I just wanted to take time to thank you for this opportunity to volunteer with RagBri. The team I worked with were awesome. Every one of the volunteers was so helpful and friendly. Kudos to the setup crew and all of the volunteers. In talking to RagBri participants, Burlington was a favorite among them. I look forward to my next trip to Burlington. So, thank you for being flexible and supportive of this Iowa tradition. City staff went above and beyond and the Burlington RagBri Planning Committee is very appreciative. So, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys rocked it.
While you two young ladies are standing there, I'd like to exchange a little something. Be it known, on behalf of the City of Burlington, Iowa, I would like to thank you for making RagBri a tremendous success. Opportunities like this don't come along every day, and when they do, a community must swing for the fences. The Greater Burlington Partnership has proven to be home run hitters. Thank you for making Burlington a great place to live, work, play, and ride a bike. On August 5th, 2019, this mayor's award is presented to the Greater Burlington Partnership. We appreciate you guys as well.
Gus McAker appeared to be very well done as well, so congratulations on that.
It was.
I heard it wasn't as exciting because the city holler ballers didn't make it.
I know.
But you know, maybe next year though. Thanks for coming down, ladies, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, and next we have a presentation from a lady that's always bringing down money.
Well, thank you very much. I was really excited to hear about the RagBri and how well it was received, but first I should officially introduce myself. My name is Nancy Snod. I'm with Alliant Energy. We have an office at 527 South Roosevelt, and I like to come before council once a year and just kind of give you some updates on some of the things we've been working on. We do like to check in periodically, and I would just like to thank the council for this opportunity. Earlier this year, we also have our community packet presentation with the city manager and the operations manager and the mayor, and we always like to make sure that we're updating on planned projects and any sort of changes that we have with respect to permitting or locating and things that we want to make sure we're connecting on. The other thing we had going this year was a community conversation with our brand-new incoming president of utility, Terry Koba, and I'd like to again thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Linda also attended and made that event. And Jim, I can't recall, did you go that day as well? Thank you so much. Terry came away with a really good feeling about this community, and I think it just helps when the leadership in Cedar Rapids can really understand what we're doing locally and how they can best support. We also had our customer comment hearing in the spring, and then some of the other things that we've been working on this year is our Alliant Foundation in support of the Des Moines County area. We had a lot of applications and a lot of deserving organizations really realized some creative use of grant dollars. We did support the RagBri with a thousand dollars as a sponsor. In addition to that, Young House Family Services for the Bridges Out of Poverty, the Capitol Theater Foundation, the City of Burlington for Home Smoke Detector Installation Program. I thought that was a great application. Also, the Leopold Landscape Alliance, the Burlington Public Library, Community Action of Southeast Iowa. There were more than one project at Southeastern Community College, the Homestead 1839 with an homestead apiary. So, they're putting together, I think, a bee colony over there, which is, you know, an environmental project, which we like to see those. Some of the other things that I've been working on with some of your staff, I'd like to thank Annette Crowner has done an excellent job. I'm on the phone with her at least once or twice a month. She is very, what do I want to say? She's got a very sharp eye on billing errors, and she helped me through a little sales tax error on our part, and she was very patient and professional through that, so I appreciate it. And then together, we went through all of your accounts, and we tried to identify the ones that would be most benefiting from a time of use rate rather than a straight time rate. So, there's a hundred and twenty metered lighting accounts that were moving to a time of use rate, and I did do kind of a pilot in a smaller community, and if the math works out right, I estimate that the city should realize a savings of somewhere between ten and fourteen thousand dollars by moving the metered lights to time of use. So, we're anxious to see how that works out. It's going to be phased in because it does take a little while for the techs to get out there and change the equipment, and then of course, we have to do the programming and the updating in the system, but Annette and I are working together on that. And then Braden was helpful as well. He went out and site verified some things, so hopefully that'll be a plus for us. Some of the other things we're doing, of course, economic development in Greater Burlington. I had the pleasure of meeting Dallas Schmidt. We also invest in the electric infrastructure and natural gas infrastructure is just part of our way of supporting our business in the community, and our investments last year were just about one and a half million dollars with the gas and the electric. We also planted a hundred and forty-three trees in the community and had just a little bit of rebate activity with the city. Last year, we did the nice project with some LEDs, and then of course, at the police station this year, there was just a little air conditioner project, a little fan motor, and a little furnace that they turned in. But what I'm glad to see is that people are engaged and keep their programs in mind when they've got something going on at one of the city facilities. So I promised I'd keep it short tonight. How am I doing?
Doing good.
Okay. Do you have anything for me, Mr. Mayor?
No, just a smile because I'm always glad to see, and you save us money, so we appreciate you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it, appreciate the partnership as always.
Nancy, I have a quick question. What was the cost savings to change those metered things to time of use?
The time of use? There's no charge to change the rate.
Okay.
Okay? There is a discount. If you, I want to make sure I explain this right. There's a time of use rate, which means the customer will realize a discount on energy that's used in the off-peak hours, okay?
Okay.
And the off-peak hours, it depends on what time of year we're on. Right now, during daylight savings time, the time of use, the off-peak, the discount rate starts after nine o'clock, and then when the time changes back, it starts after eight o'clock. Well, of course, when is the lights, when are the lights being used in the off-peak hours? There is a premium that you would pay during the on-peak hours. We don't expect that the lights are going to be utilized very much during the on-peak hours. You get all day Saturday and Sunday, so there are more off-peak hours in the week. As a residential customer, I had a time of use at my home because I know how to work it. I don't start that dishwasher till after nine, don't start the washing machine till after nine, and I try to do all the laundry on the weekends. So there are things that you can do. But one of the reasons it made sense to take a look at this now, with the last tariff change, there used to be a premium that was charged to have a time of use meter because there were two recorders in there, it was a specialty device, it was more expensive, so there was a premium charge, I think it was like three dollars and fifty cents a month. Well, if you have a blinking light, the usage isn't going to be that great, and so if the savings was only going to be five dollars a month and you're paying a three fifty meter premium, it was about a wash and it didn't make sense to do it. With the last tariff change, because of the new smart meter, the automated metering infrastructure is now in place that we've been doing over the last year, the tariff change provided that there will be no difference, no premium charge to have a time use rate. That's why it made sense to take a look at doing that now.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, again, come back and see us anytime you want to give us more good news. We certainly appreciate you, thank you so much.
My father-in-law, nine years old, so I'm off to a birthday party.
Happy birthday, father-in-law.
Have some cake for me. Okay, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item One Consent Agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent tonight, we have the usual, finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine, and cigarettes, reports, and bonds. We have seven resolutions. The first is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving refund of beer license for Casey's Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, number 2342. The third is a resolution approving refund of beer license for Casey's Marketing Company doing business as Casey's General Store, number 2346. The fourth is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment, and release of retention monies for the 2018 Agency Street Widening Project East End. The fifth is a resolution approving 28E agreement between the City of Burlington, Iowa, and Henderson County, Illinois for ambulance service to portions of Henderson County, Illinois. The sixth is a resolution approving professional services agreements with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa for general consulting services for the Burlington, Iowa Wastewater Treatment Facility for the period of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. And then the seventh is a resolution approving amendment between CWA Local 7176 and the City of Burlington. We have a public hearing set for August 19th, which is a consideration of a lease agreement with the Des Moines County Historical Society for the Hawkeye Log Cabin in Crapo Park, and we also have some appointments. Mayor Proton?
Yes, we have two appointments, one for the Animal Hearing Board, Melinda McCambo, and the Historic Preservation Commission, Judy Stevens. We thank you both for your service on those.
I know. Thank you, Judy. Thank you, sis. Anybody from the audience that would like to have any of these items removed? I see none. Counsel?
Your honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under Item One Consent Agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray. Aye. Rinker? I'm sorry. McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
All right. This is a consideration of sale of a portion of property located south of the property locally known as 1220 Mount Pleasant Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. That's why he's here. Okay, Mr. Tisland?
This is a portion of land adjacent to Mount Pleasant Street. Kind of came up with the work on the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, that there was some excess land that the city owned that was being primarily used by Roberts Tire, here shown in red, that wasn't of need for the city with the bridge going in, so looking to transfer that through sale of property. It's approximately 0.21 acres, as shown here, outlined in orange. There are some sewer easements that run through the property that are highlighted in yellow on the screen, so it makes it not a buildable lot, but can be used for storage and paving as it currently is. Roberts Tire has submitted an offer to purchase that for seven hundred and fifty dollars, conditions being that the property should be combined with the land to the north owned by the purchaser. The easements for storm sewer access and maintenance by the city shall be maintained as shown on the platte survey here and property by Quiklan D.
Okay. Should we give this property to Bill Roberts? Tell me, Magic A-Ball. I know, I'm going to get it for that tomorrow. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
I have none.
I'm good.
Your honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen?
Graham Murray. Aye. McCambo?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of a property, a portion of the property located, it's south of property, let me start over.
I do that all the time. I do it all the time.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of a portion of the property located south of the property locally known as 1220 Mount Pleasant Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Graham Murray. Aye. McCambo?
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Roberts. It's always a pleasure doing business with you. You know, I always liked you. Past tense. All right. Okay.
Thanks, folks, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We've taken care of this property now for thirty-eight years, so we're really happy to open.
And thank you for the maintenance and the upkeep. We appreciate that, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, resolutions.
Your honor, I have a resolution awarding bid for the 2019 Dankford Pool Park Improvement Project.
Mr. Tisland?
Need a second, please.
I got a second.
Thank you. Mr. Tisland?
We're looking to continue this, but just some details on the project. This went out for bid, and bids were accepted July 23rd, received three bids back with ByState Contracting, the low bid at five hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. This project is, was fundraised, fundraised by the swim club. All the costs for the project is intended to be raised by the swim club. It's confirmed by U.S. Bank, funds are available for the project, and the amount of the project cost plus a 10% contingency, these are currently held by U.S. Bank. This is making the pool usable year-round with a dome structure and conditioning the pool house. The city will continue to operate the pool in the summer months, the May, June, July, part of August months without the dome on the pool, but their intention is to construct a dome and operate it through Lisi that the city has from August through that May time period with the dome up. Per the resolution, it stated that the city authorizes the mayor to sign the contract upon approval of the project by the Iowa Department of Public Health. They did send the plans to the Iowa Department of Public Health, or contacted the Department of Public Health, and they did have an initial comment on circulation system that needs to be addressed, so the swim club is getting some designs on that system and hopefully have a cost back on that, but that will be an additional cost, and we didn't want to award contract until we knew what that
Right on.
... cost was for that additional project. But waiting pool, the small kiddie pool and the larger pool are both on the same circulation system. That's no longer allowed, so they're asking that they design and separate those systems, and so they've contacted an engineer on that and are working through that, and then we'll get a quote on that, but that will likely increase the project cost, but we don't know what that is, if that's a small ten thousand dollar cost or if that's larger, and we want to make sure they have funds on hand to complete that, and if they're asking for other funds, they have that discussion as well. So, this would not delay, currently delay the project, the start date was not until August 26th, but I think the delay could be on the Department of Public Health, they have a backlog on projects submitted. They have seven in queue and a four-week timeframe for, minimum four-week timeframe for review, so we just want to make sure everyone's aware of that timeframe and I guess get more exact cost before we move forward.
So, we're still on target, we just have some things to work on, basically?
Potentially on target unless those seven other projects take longer and the four weeks turns into ten weeks, or that comes back that it's a fifty thousand dollar cost and they're asking the city, can you contribute X amount to that?
The separation of the two systems is required, required now because of the upgrade to the system.
Yeah.
We had an exclusion, we were able to keep that moving forward
Yeah.
... without doing this.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not allowed if you construct a new pool or with this type of repair work, so.
I understand, it's just unfortunate for the swim club. They just have to keep jumping through more hoops and more hoops and...
Yeah, sometimes, man, it's, sometimes it's tougher, you know, you've got to go uphill a little bit, but it makes your legs stronger. They're going to, they're going to be good when it's all said and done. Are there any questions or concerns from the audience? You guys have been fantastic tonight, even Brian, kind of, sort of. So, counsel?
So, your honor, to continue the resolution awarding bids for the 2019 Dankford Park Pool Improvement Project, we'll move that to the August 19th, 2019 city council meeting.
Second.
Second.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray. Aye. McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 Sealcoat Street Resurfacing Project. I need a second.
Second.
I can't second my own guess.
Good evening. The resolution in front of you would approve contract with pro paving for the 2019 Sealcoat Project. This work includes Loysen and Denmark. I think there's some smaller section of some other roads, but the main work is on Loysen and Denmark. The engineer's estimate was at two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Pro paving's bid is at two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. We have not worked with this contractor, but the bids are favorable, so I recommend approving bid to pro paving.
All right. Any other additions from staff? Questions or concerns from the audience?
And they're local. Nick?
No questions on here.
All right. Graham Murray. Aye. McCambo? Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 HMA Street Resurfacing Project.
Second.
Struggling.
Nick?
This resolution would approve bid to W.L. Miller in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and five dollars for an HMA project that entails a lot of work in the North Hill neighborhood, Seventh, Eighth, North, Franklin, there's quite a few, I could probably get you a map, actually shortly after this, we'll probably do a construction, pre-construction meeting here, they plan to get started early September. This project funds was kind of, it was a shifting from, it was supposed to be next year's projects, but Harrison Street was a kind of a change, changed what we wanted to do, so we shifted some dollars around to do this project. This project estimate was at six hundred and ninety-seven thousand, so a little bit higher than what was estimated, but asphalt is kind of a tough one for us to estimate. You know, the HMA project that we just did was a federally funded project, so those dollars are a little bit different than what a local project is, but they plan to still do this this year, want to get this work done, it's needed in this area, so I recommend awarding bid to W.L. Miller.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
None.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray. Aye. McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Your honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2019 ADA improvements.
I need a second. Thank you.
This resolution, we kind of talked about last week, only having one bidder and the dollars being quite a bit higher than what the estimate was. I think the timing of the bidding probably doesn't help it, but after discussing with the city engineer and the DOT requirements that were trying, the ADA requirements along the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge that we're trying to meet, we think we can do this next spring tied in with a little bit more project, the ADA requirements that we're supposed, we're going to do with the HMA work that'll happen this fall, will get designed this spring, or this winter, so I would recommend turning this resolution down and rejecting the bids, and so we'll change the scope this fall and go back to out to bid in the spring.
Right on. Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Was there, was there, was there not, we separated this from Mount Pleasant Bridge, is that what you just said?
Correct.
So, okay, I just want to make sure I had that straight, so thank you.
Any other questions? Kathleen?
Graham Murray? No. McCambo?
Nope.
Rinker?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Phillips?
No.
I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Front Street Hawkeye Arch Sewer Repair Project.
Second.
This resolution is for a bid that was not done prior to the work session. We actually did the bid letting last Tuesday. I was actually not there for it. I'm going to get Brian up here in a second. This is a continuation of a project where the contract was previously terminated. That project was awarded out, and the construction cost for that had a, have a ninety-three thousand dollar original contract cost. The bids, the low bid that we got was two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, so the over total is a little bit higher than what just this bid shows. We were able to keep a lot of the materials from the original bid, so that's what that ninety-three thousand dollars is. This bid item, what was changed from the previous scope was a sheet pile, cofferdam wall outside of the stop log system that we have. From the previous contract, we've not come to trust the stop log system, it's only able to protect up to like eleven and a half foot river height, and then anytime you have any sort of rain, it affects the system pretty greatly because it drains two-thirds of the town, so I don't know if you have anything else to add to it, Brian? You know, there's a little bit of a disparity between the dollar figures of the low bidder and then the second bidder. Brian has had a conversation with the contractor on it and feels comfortable moving forward or awarding bid to the low bid, so Four Seasons at two hundred and eighty-nine thousand would be my recommendation.
Got nothing to say, Brian? Any questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Who was the last company that we awarded bid to?
The original contract?
Yeah.
Carly Nelson.
Any other questions?
It wasn't an issue with Carly Nelson that we ended up doing that. I think it was just to change the design scope and how we were addressing having consistently high water, just to be clear.
Yeah, no, I didn't think that it was. I was just curious.
Nothing else you want to add, Brian? Fine. Counsel, are we satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Kathleen?
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCampbell?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Well done. Now is the time that we will entertain comments from the audience. If there's somebody in the audience who has any comments tonight, as there were. Brian? You got nothing to say? Shameful. Mr. Tisland?
Once he starts. Just a reminder again, we're looking to have our Tiger Grant Public Input Session next Tuesday, August 13th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. here at City Hall Council Chambers. Our consultants will be on hand to lead that input session, looking at discussing the riverfront and then streetscape design for Jefferson and Main Street. They'll be in town Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We have some focus groups, some stakeholders that we have set up to meet with individually and as groups as well, but this is the primary public input session that anyone interested in the project know what's going on or how it's going to occur or that has input, we'd ask them to come to this session at 6:00 p.m. again on Tuesday, August 13th here at City Council Chambers. We do have our information on our website. If you go to the city's website and type in Tiger Grant, we have a page dedicated to the Tiger project that has some of the previous plans. Our Green America's Community, we went through a public input process on as well that had some ideas for Washington and Main Street as well as the riverfront plan, but as we get more information, we'll continue to add it to that page, so you can just go to BurlingtonIowa.org and type in Tiger Grant in the search bar and it'll take you to that page. We do have some other street block meetings set up where we've contacted individual businesses and property owners along Jefferson and Main Street at various times throughout Wednesday, August 14th, so that's more geared towards the block level and streetscape improvements, trying to get smaller groups and focus in on those blocks. But if someone's able to, not able to attend another meeting in the 200 block of Jefferson but not able to attend at that time, come to another meeting and certainly give your input. But we have gotten these postcards out to all the businesses on Jefferson and Main Street. If they haven't gotten one, please contact us and we can get you more information or answer any questions you may have, but trying to get the information out as we can. We do have this posted on our Facebook page as well, the public input session, so encourage you to share that and try and get the word out on, trying to get the individuals that want to have input on this project to be able to voice those input and get those concerns out or some ideas they have. Our consultants do look to come back to council in early September and present their findings and kind of that plan moving forward as well, so there'll be that opportunity as well for kind of more final designs input that they're going to present, so. Any questions on that? We do have two council members, Mr. Rinker and Mr. Phillips, are on the stakeholder meetings. I did, there are some stakeholder meetings throughout the week, that week as well, that we'd ask you to try and attend those on the riverfront and the streetscape as well, I guess the steering committee meetings, so.
You good?
We have a member of the, you did say we had a member of the Riverfront Advisory Committee on the steering committee?
I talked to Ryan today about the stakeholder meeting for the Riverfront, about making sure someone's at that meeting.
Okay. I'd also ask that somebody's part of the steering portion of that as well. I know when we did the Riverfront portion, they were represented on that group.
Just a reminder, it's not too late to take out council papers. There's two openings. The first day for candidates to bring in their papers with the, to the Des Moines County Auditor is Monday, August 12th, which is coming up. The last day is Thursday, August 29th by five. That's to the Des Moines County Auditor's Office. Two openings, five or more candidates running. We will have a primary in October and general elections November.
All right. It's going to be a groovy time, so make sure you're, make sure you're ready to get groovy. Peanut butter.
Yeah. I wasn't here last week, but I want to extend a huge thank you to anyone that had a part in RagBri, how remote or how large. Burlington really rocked it. Thank you very, very much from the bottom of my heart as a longtime RagBri'er, so I heard only positive things. People even talk to people from the space stations, so I mean, there are some really cool connections that people made from RagBri stopping through Burlington. Also, remember Farmers Market this Thursday. Also, remember Bee's Saturday and remember the movie, free movie, You're a Good Man, Charlie Brown is playing, so all kinds of fun things going on downtown, so make sure you check it out.
All right. Appreciate that. Counselor?
I have nothing.
You got nothing, but you reserve the right, I'm sure.
You reserve the right. Next week, be putting it on your calendar, your calendar, council talk.
Yes.
So, next Wednesday.
Just want to say my wishes to the family of David Robinson. He just passed away, his dear friend, and asset to Burlington. Also, just want to give a shout out again, I thought RagBri was phenomenal. I got to talk to some of the bike riders and we shared some stories and whatnot, and one of the riders, he thought I was joking with him when I said I was the mayor and for some reason, for some reason, he didn't believe me. For the life of me, I couldn't figure out, you know, what the big issue was, but he thought I was just joshing and pulling his leg, so anyways, wherever that guy is, man, you know, I'm serious. I just didn't have a bracelet to give him.
I've seen Fireball Run.
He hadn't seen Fireball Run.
That was a low blow, man.
And so, also, just want to give a quick shout out and a thank you to Chief Kramer for being available and just always being ready, man. Burlington appreciates you and I certainly do thank you for, thank for all you do, man. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
So, that's all I've got, MPT.
Yep. Does anyone have any information on the community basket? Isn't that Sunday?
Yeah, so they've changed their format. They are selling the community basket tickets, but they've actually broke it up, so there's not one winner who gets a lot. They've actually broke it up, so there's four or five winners that end up with a larger package, so. If anybody wants tickets for that, they can contact Kim Parker at Community Field or anybody that they know that is with the Friends of Community Field.
Thanks. That's all I have.
All right. That sounds like plenty. Counselor?
I don't have anything. I will not be here next Monday.
Okay. City manager?
When does Fireball Run come out?
I want you to pause that. Don't take care of it for a minute. You know, people at home, I just want you to turn your face the other way for a minute. Go ahead, Jimmy.
I have the radio this week.